I'd like to call to order the Winthrop Town Council meeting for April 4th, 2023. We are in the Harvey Hearing Room, and roll call, please.
Counsel Honan.
Here.
Counsel Piscillo. Counsel Munson.
Here.
Counsel Belcher.
Here.
Counsel DiMarco.
Here.
Counsel Flotkat.
Here.
Counsel Ilo.
Here.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Here.
President Luteri.
Here.
Before we stand, I'll just say the Zoom, which I forgot to say earlier. If you want to participate on Zoom, the phone number is 1-305-224-1968, and the ID is 841-458-70668. Please rise for the pledge. Counsel DiMarco.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for... On March 27th, the horror and terror of yet another school shooting, this time at the Covenant School in Nashville, Tennessee, left six innocent people dead, three adults, including a custodian, substitute teacher, and the headmaster along with three young children who lost their lives. I'm asking for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And before we go on to minutes, I have asked, because of just the violence going on in the school shooting in particular, not this one in particular, but just in general, I've gotten phone calls just wanting updates on security in our town facilities. And I thank the superintendent for being here, too. And Lisa takes her role incredibly seriously. Obviously, educating our kids is foremost, at the forefront. But providing safety for our kids is also something she thinks about constantly. And I just asked the police chief to come down. And, you know, there's only so much we could share in a public setting, but just to give us a little overview on security. Chief and Lisa, Superintendent.
So thank you, Mr. President and counselors, for the opportunity to join you once again, Town Manager Marino. Thank you for your continued support. So I guess we can say that we've been working on school security since I've been the police chief. And much of the upgrades that we've received has been through the generosity of Speaker DeLeo with the Juvenile and Youth Safety Grants. We've made incredible and remarkable progress. Back in 2012, we had the IACP and the International Association of Chiefs of Police through the Department of Justice granted us a school assessment and survey. In 2014, they came back to reassess us, and we made all of the... They told us they gave us a five-year plan. They were impressed that we have made all the upgrades that they recommended within a three-year period instead of a five-year period. So again, every year, come August, we go through the schools with a checklist. The superintendent gets a report from me, Chief Wiley. The building commissioner, who's there as well doing the inspections with us. So we have a whole team, School Resource Officer. Every phone is checked, every camera is checked. Detective Wayne Carter runs the camera systems for the entire town, including assisting with the school's security cameras as well. So we know in live time if one is down, they're immediately fixed. They're on the priority list. You know, a school camera goes down, that's fixed that same day. We have a vendor called Lantel, which is contracted through the Homeland Security U.A.C. in Boston. They're on the state contract list, and they do our cameras as well. These are a lot of our cameras are connected to the infrastructure in nine other communities. But again, you know, as you alluded to at the beginning, we can't get into the specific details of where these devices are, how many we have, what buildings they're on. Are other security measures that we have in place would defeat the purpose in a public session to go into that? I can tell you that Lisa has worked many years on the Threat Assessment Team. I joined her on that team, as well as the school psychologist.
Multiple administrators.
Multiple administrators, Scott Wiley from the Fire Department Chief, Wiley from the Fire Department. And if we have a potential threat or we hear rumblings of a threat, we convene the Threat Assessment Team as a checklist to go through. We're also members of the NMLAC, Northeast Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council. The primary reason for joining NMLAC was their STARS program. The STARS program gets activated on any type of threat to a school. They combine with police officers, school therapists, social workers, principals, and superintendents that deploy to your school to assist the superintendent, the administrators in that school for whatever the prices may be. It's a huge multiplier for us. We have, if we need multiple disciplinaries, we call one number. The whole team is deployed. With them comes specialized equipment as well, including metal detectors if we ever needed them. They can install them within 15 minutes. They bring them with them in a trailer that's stored in another community. So we have access to all of these great features by being a member. Costs us $2,400 a year to be a member. We also have team with the police officers that join the team. Rob Carter is a School Resource Officer on the STARS program. Sean Perrins on the Motorcycle Program. Dave Brown was on the K-9 program until we retired that K-9. So we have to contribute resources as well. And again, just as a reminder, we had an unfortunate active shooter event here in that community, you know, now almost two years ago. NMLAC deployed their whole strategic team, including motorcycles and SWAT offices and command posts and everything to relieve the Boston police, allow Boston police to return to Boston. So NMLAC is not just there in the STARS program, but there as well for other tragedies and emergencies within the town. The NMLAC team was all deployed up in the Lawrence, Mandover area when the gas explosions were there, and they were there for weeks. So they're not just some people that come and leave. When the cameras go away, they stay and support the community. So I will allow the superintendent an opportunity to fill in the blanks where I left out.
Sure, sure. So as probably most of you have spoken to me, are aware, security and the safety of our students and our staff and our community is the number-one priority of the Winthrop Public Schools. There is nothing that is above that. Our working relationship with the Police Department, Fire Department, and other county agencies like the DPW are critical in terms of our success management and funding of the number of things that we do with our schools. We can't really separate any of the departments from the school department. One, we need them all to help us. And two, there's not enough funding in the world for us to have something so secure that nobody can do anything to us. We are well aware of that. So there is no full safety. We are watching it every single day. Other things that we put into the school system with the assistance of the Police Department and other departments. We have some social networking tracking that we do through Social Sentinel, which is an alert system that lets us know if people are tweeting, Instagramming, or posting negative comments about the school. We get that alert. And thankfully, not frequently, but when we do get it, the first call is between the chief and myself to look up who these people are, what they're saying, is this a potential threat, and what are we going to do next? Some of the internal controls that we have. Our staff are all Alice-trained, which is an alert training if there is an active shooter or somebody in our school comes into our school that is a threat. Teachers in every building are trained. That's a condition of our work employment now here. We have a majority of our staff that are trained in Stop the Bleed, thankfully, with collaboration of the Town Health Department, Police, Fire, and Action Ambulance. That'd be if somebody was bleeding, whether it be from somebody coming into one of our schools and hurting someone or someone in the cafeteria who hurts themselves accidentally with a knife. So staff has been trained on that. Many members have been trained in CPR, again, with the collaboration of the school and the other town departments. We have emergency plans, current, that are updated. All of these are updated every single year and in between if we need to. Emergency plans, evacuation plans. Our student Threat Assessment Team works not only for outside threats, but also on occasion, there may be an inside threat, a student who may have suicidal or homicidal ideations, a student that is potentially making threats to another student or a member of the staff. We have internal staff that runs through a smaller version of what we do in an outside threat assessment, and that includes evaluation of students and connections to agencies within the state that can come out and help us with a student who may be having a very difficult time. The student, we also do now a student social-emotional check-in with all of our students, K through 12, where we collect data on our students three times a year. We put that in place for a number of reasons. COVID certainly has left us many good things, but has left us some things that have been difficult for us with the emotional changes in some of our students. So this system is a check-in three times a year that allows us to keep this data electronically and to be able to share it as students move from grade to grade. And the purpose of keeping that data is to not lose kids from year to year and not allow children to fall through the cracks and also to help us figure out what have we done, what has worked and what hasn't. And as students escalate up that ladder, it allows us to identify more things to put in place for our kids, to help them along the way. Our staff has many trainings, one of them that's critical, signs of suicide, so that our staff members are aware of the commentary that students may be making and be able to alert the people that are on our internal Threat Assessment Team to intervene and help with those students. The upgrades in our school oftentimes happen throughout the year, but the key is our yearly Police, Fire, and DPW assessment of our school buildings. There's many things that we may not notice that the police and the fire would, and some of them are very simple. They may have to do with a broken door lock, keys that don't work in a certain door, something with the elevator, maybe storage in a hallway that shouldn't be there because it could cause a fire or could block. You know, if we need assistance, could block that doorway. So when they come out each year, that is taken extremely seriously. My principals actually get very nervous on that day because they know what's in front of them. I want to just make sure people understand that this is not a normal practice in every public school, that yearly, the Police, Fire, and community come out and look at your school buildings and give you a very comprehensive, thanks to Terry's writing, which is comprehensive checklist and itemized list of things that we need to do. And it doesn't stop there because, as Terry is maybe worse than me in terms of follow-up, checks in with us to make sure that we're making those improvements. Some of our grants that we have, our school security grants, safety grants that we apply for. We utilize that money, for the most part, to take care of those needed changes in our schools. Terry spoke about Lantel, which is a homeland, offshoot of Homeland Security Systems. Lantel has been a key player in the security systems that we have, the cameras that we have within our schools. We can call them, and they can be out here within an hour looking at a camera that's in a key space in our schools or on Miller Field or outside of our schools, wherever those cameras may be. And another feature is that key administrators can log into those cameras. Kathleen might want to mute herself. So those are just some of the things. I understand, as the superintendent, you know, in my role, but more importantly, in my role as a mother of a child who is still in the school system. Terry still has kids in the school system. I think that's probably a hidden benefit to the community of Winthrop. I was super into the security when my kids were little and just starting. But now... I'm so sorry, it's not allowing me to mute them. Yeah, now more importantly...
Yes, cut them off.
The focus of security here, it goes beyond the walls of a title that either one of us hold. It is very personal. I understand as a parent that it can be frustrating that you don't know, because as parents, we want to know, well, what are your security systems? Tell me what you do to make me feel better. And I understand that as a mom, and I'm sure Terry does as a dad. But as somebody who is responsible for 2,000 students and over 350 employees every day, if we tell people what our security systems are or what our plans are, they're no longer safe. Because in this world, we cannot trust people. And we do change our plans often to eliminate anybody really ever finding out about how we do keep our kids as safe as we do. So I think it's hard for people to trust us, that we are keeping our kids safe without us telling them the details. I would just ask for people to trust that. Our process is ongoing. Every single day, we're dealing with safety and security issues in the school. So I hope that information is helpful. I could probably talk for two hours. My voice will not let me talk for another two minutes, but I'm happy to answer.
No, it's very helpful. No individual, no municipality is infallible. But we just want the residents to know that we take security incredibly seriously in our town. And like the superintendent says, you know, it can't maybe be said for every municipality in the state, but we, public safety officials, our school department, town departments, take this extremely seriously, and we understand that there's only so much you could tell. And I'm happy for that because I shouldn't know. And there are people out there that shouldn't know. But it just, there's a feeling of comfort, you know, you're dealing with our most precious assets, right? Your kids. And there's a feeling of comfort to know the dedication and caring that you two take, and I thank you for that. And I'll open it up to any councilors that has any questions or comments. Vice President Ruggiero.
I have a question, but just a comment. Obviously, it's unfortunate that, excuse me, that we're at the point in, you know, our lives and in our nation's history that we have to talk about this. But thank you for coming in and, you know, addressing this. I don't think we've really had an update like this in, at least in my time here on specifically school security and school safety. So just thank you for everything that you do. You know, sometimes people ask, like, oh, you know, would you allow your kids to do that? Or would you send your kids there? And the answer is yes, like, you both would, and you both do. And I think that's, you know, it makes me feel pretty good about the way we're handling things at the school. So thank you both.
It doesn't mean we don't have a pit in our stomach. When these unfortunate events take place, they resonate, you know, a lot of fear and sadness with people, and we are not exempt from that. But I do feel very confident in our day-to-day management of the school safety. And I do know that it is extremely annoying to parents that we do not allow parents or anybody to come into our schools. Prior to COVID, it was a little bit more loose. COVID, we didn't let you in because we didn't want your COVID-ness, for lack of better terms. But we found that that gave us, as a school district, one more level of security. So when people dismiss their children, you'll find that they have to wait outside. And I know it's cold, and I know it's wet sometimes. And I know it's annoying sometimes. But if you dress right, it's usually only a minute. But it's definitely another level of security for us.
I just think the most important thing to remember that as long as we have human beings, there's going to be human error someplace. And we have to drill for that, we have to train for that, and we have to assure that the staff and the police officers are all doing their jobs on a daily basis, so there is no human error. But, you know, they say that we're going to be 100%. And when you factor in human errors, you can't say anything's 100%. I'm going to say I'm very comfortable sending my daughters to school every single day. I rest comfortably knowing they're in school every single day. And I know, you know, there's a run-hide fight out there. There's Alice, there's a Lawrence. No matter what you call it, it all boils down to the same thing. It really is a run-hide fight program, no matter what you call it. Now, the state is adopting the NFPA 3000, which is the National Fighter Fighters, Professional Fighter Fighters Association, a 3000 standard, that's a state standard, that Police, Fire, and EMS have to meet within the next year. So we've already worked on that. I'm already trained in Alert. The Alert at the University of Texas is training, training the trainers in Massachusetts. We will be sending train-to-trainers. And then we will drill with Police, Fire, and EMS on how we respond. So we're good inside the school. We've been doing what they call ASHA training, which is a multi-disciplinary response. Who's coming into the warm zone? Who's staying out in the cold zone? And then who's going after the person inside the building? So that's now the latest training that's coming. We'll have it here in Winthrop as well. We'll train every shift. And then, you know, hopefully, we never need it. But, you know, basically, what we did, we took the planning and the efforts that we've done with the school and plopped in the middle of Shirley Street and took 2021. And it worked out well. Response time was quick. We isolated the incident quickly. Unfortunately, we lost two people during that day. But then we had reunification, and we had mental health follow-up and community mental health follow-up through public health. I've gotten more calls based on our response to that event saying, how did you figure that out so quickly? And who implemented it? It was easy because we've been working since 2013 with Meredith Hurley's office. So we had this already planned for the schools, and we're able to just transfer it. So it's a benefit that all the training we've done has benefited, will benefit the whole community, no matter where it is. And hopefully, we don't have another incident like that.
And with that incident, too, I think the community may or may not know, whether, being the community that it is, students or children were affected by that as well, whether they saw something on TV, whether they saw something in reality, whether they heard something. So the other aspect of the training that Terry has gone through that we then implemented in the schools was the reaction of who was showing up at the table. So after the incident was dealt with on an emergency basis by the police, the follow-up didn't just go to the people on Shirley Street and those that reached out. It went into the schools because all of our children were affected. And that is because of the relationships that we have and the work that we do together as a community. So we are not separate in any way, but we're trained at different levels. And I think the training of our staff in schools and our children, when I say we train in children, our children are trained to listen to the adult who's in charge of them. And the staff training has been difficult because it's hard to practice these drills because it's scary to think that it could happen here. But I think it's the most important takeaway from all of that with our staff, that it is better to know what to do and have a chance of survival than not know what to do and likely not survive. And so that is why we put so much time and effort into it, as scary as it is for families and for our students. Sorry.
And we have the Public Health Department with us when we drill. So we have councilors with us in case we trigger any negative emotions. There's a room that they can go into, and councils are there on scene to deal with that. You don't know who's been through what in their lifetime. And we want to have support there for them if it does trigger something. So I'll leave you on this. I know budget time is nearly, is quickly approaching. When you're looking at town buildings and you're looking at schools, you know, take a good long look at building maintenance money because that equals security. It allows us to fix a door, to fix the locks, to do the smaller things that we need to do to make sure that all buildings are secure, not just the schools. So, you know, I just urge, I know the town manager has that philosophy as well. And I think we're in good hands this budget season. But I just want to remind everyone that during the budget season, building maintenance money is very important to us.
Just a couple of quick questions left. Counsel Munson, then Counsel Flotkat.
Thank you. We've been fortunate to have a lot of shared parenting moments with kids in the same age. And I'm thankful for both of you and for the whole town at large to make it a safe place. And I've been very comfortable bringing my kids to your schools and to your schools, and it feels very safe. So I'm very thankful. I wanted to just show my appreciation. I also wanted to just point and just ask, more of a comment, maybe you don't have to respond here. But I appreciate the fact that you're doing three times a year to keep an eye on their emotional, social kind of well-being and kind of create that track record. My concern sometimes is the quiet one that just stays off the radar. And they don't actually say anything until they go pop. And so I just wonder if there's also, on the other end of the spectrum, not the loud ones, the brash ones, or the troublemakers, but the ones that don't speak enough or don't have any interaction with anyone. I worry about those people being lost in the shuffle.
Right, so that's a great question. And the easy answer to that is the assessments that we do assess every child, and they pinpoint changes in behavior. And because that is something that, you know, statistically, we have found and research has found that changes in behavior for somebody who has committed some type of a horrific event, you can track backwards and see those changes in behavior. And that's the main reason that we implemented this type of evaluation of students. And a lot of it is self, the majority of it is the students self-evaluating and us taking that commentary, and then the teachers also evaluating the child based on their self-evaluation. So it's able to track those pieces of data. And the most important thing is to store those pieces of data and to review them consistently so we can find the child who was an active child playing sports, maybe involved in extra clubs. And all of a sudden, next school year comes back in a hoodie, maybe not really talking too much, maybe saying some things that they wouldn't have said last year. We can look at last year's data, or last semester's data, to say, why is that change happening? And how can we intervene? And then carry forward to make sure that we do make progress with that child. And if not, we have multiple agencies that we can bring forth for our parents, you know, to support that in school and out of school. So that's a really good point. It was a missing link, you know, in terms of being able to track kids.
Counsel Flotkat.
I'm very impressed with the systems that you have in place, the multiple layers, and that you're approaching finding things in advance, which seems to be the missing point in a lot of these problems. I did want to ask, in this training that you're doing, where you said the Department of Health was involved and all, are the children involved in this training, too?
So we train the staff. The staff brings it back to the age-appropriate level of their children. They're the ones that will be led, the best fit to choose how to present that. We have bought books that have been distributed throughout the schools on how to approach it on an age-based level. And they can simply read the book, and it has instructions in it for the staff member to follow. So we're trying to support the staff as well as how to explain it. But we didn't, I think it would be more traumatizing for police officers to walk in the room and say, hey, this is what we're going to do, right? So we try to have the professionals deal with them every day because ultimately, they're going to have to follow those professionals. Almost like a fire drill. Just do what I say when it's time to do it, right?
Exactly, yeah. Very similar to what you want to call a drill, how we are an evacuation drill, whatever it may be. But I think important to Terry's point, it's age-appropriate. So what kids are learning in kindergarten and first grade is a bit different than what the other students are learning. We have some work to do on that in terms of the social-emotional well-being of our kids and presenting something like an active shooter training to high school students. We're feeling very confident that our kids will listen to our staff members and do what they're asked to do. Our next level would be to start to gauge what kids could handle something at a higher level for training. And that's, you've got to deal with the emotional side of the kids, too.
Having lived through the '50s and the bomb drills that we got, climbing under desks and all this nonsense that we went through, I assure you, the only thing it did was give us all nightmares. It was very traumatizing.
Our kids are pretty good about doing what we tell them to do in the moment and focusing in on trust and adult. Do a lot of building of trust relationships with our kids. It's a main priority to get to know kids and build some trusting relationships with them so that when we say it's time to listen, they do. And we practice time to listen a lot.
It sounds like you've got a good handle on it.
Counsel DiMarco.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, I mean, Lisa Howard has been out of the school system for at least 32 years, off and on.
Like 50, 49, 55, if I count my school...
Oh, you're not that old, stop.
I'm a school year, too, don't forget.
I personally couldn't feel more safe with my kids from a safety perspective under your supervision. So I thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Again, thank you so much for coming. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you for your support. I'd just be remiss if I didn't thank my staff. I get the opportunity to come here and present to you, and they do the work. So I just wanted to make sure I thanked them. Thank you.
Same for the school district as well. Thank you.
The minutes circulated from the April 21st meeting. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Counsel Belcher, second by Counsel Flotkat. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If others know, if you guys have it. General information recommendations, we do not have anything. Public hearings, we have none tonight. Public comment in the audience? Yes. Yes.
Totsacko Precinct 2. I had the opportunity to read the proposed flag policy, which I believe is gonna be voted on or at least discussed tonight. I thank everybody on the Rules and Ordinance Committee for their time. This is actually fairly innocuous, but there are some concerns, at least from my end, maybe confusion. I'm not sure how, you have kind of two masters, so I'd encourage you to kind of reconsider that, like you have either the town council, the town manager to have this proclamation. It's not clear how that works. I'm concerned about the whole sentiment piece. Sentiment comes down to, how do you have a whole town sentiment? I don't know that you will have that when you're deciding on which flags to fly. And I was also asked to come here and read a letter into the record from Brianna Malloy and her wife, Brianna Malloy and her wife Sarah, because they couldn't make it tonight because they have some concerns as well. Let's address the most concerning line of this proposal. Flags may be displayed on the community flag pole at the E.B. Newton School by the town as an expression of the town's official sentiments. The word sentiment is defined as an attitude towards something, a bias, a mental feeling, an opinion, et cetera. The town council and town manager do not and should not have the authority to make decisions based on sentiments for the winter residents. When the flag policy is brought up, it is usually followed by requesting the gay pride flag be flown, especially as Gay Pride Month is approaching in June. We are a lesbian married couple of Winthrop. By the way, they're in the LGBT community. That's, they wanted me to make that distinction. However, we openly stand against flying the pride flag on all town-owned flag poles for a few reasons. As stated above, this opens the door for a free-for-all to fly any flag based on feelings and opinions. Residents and businesses in our town are strongly encouraged to fly the flags that represent their beliefs and what they are proud of. It just doesn't belong on town property as a platform to divide citizens. Let us keep flying our U.S. flag and POW MIA flag, which unites us all and there is nothing at all divisive about it. Also in regard to specifically flying the rainbow pride flag, it's important to be educated that our pride flag has drastically changed since 2018. There is the original eight-color rainbow flag, which was created in 1978 by a gay artist and Vietnam veteran, and it is rarely flown these days. Unfortunately, this flag change has divided the LGBT community, so flying the progressive pride flag can be contentious. This is something important for all to be aware of and we felt compelled to express our strong opinion on changing the flag policy. Sincerely, Sarah and Brianna Malloy of District 6.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Anything on Zoom?
No hands now.
Correspondents, Denise?
I have received none.
Any counselors? All right. Committee reports. Finance Committee. Counsel Belcher.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met this evening before this meeting. It was myself and Counsel Ruggiero. There was one motion that we went over about moving funds from the legal services line to the personnel line. This is mostly administrative to shift the funds from the line that we use to pay KP Law into a personnel line so we can pay the town's in-house counsel through the end of this fiscal year.
All right. And that will come up in Old Business. Rules and Ordinance, Vice President Ruggiero.
Thank you, Council President. The Rules and Ordinance Subcommittee met on the 29th of March. Took up two items, three motions total. The first, in attendance were myself, counselors DiMarco and Munson from the committee and Counsel Belcher as an ex officio member. The first issue we took up was the pair of motions that was presented to the council at our last meeting related to the composition of the Board of Appeals. The first motion that we discussed would increase the size of the Board of Appeals, so it would require us to appoint additional members to that. The second motion coupled with that would adopt Mass General Law Chapter 39, Section 23, which would allow the associate members of the Board of Appeals to step in and vote for an absent member, a regular voting member of the Board of Appeals. If that person were to be absent on the day of a vote, provided that they had missed no more than one meeting during the hearing process and that they attest in writing that they were aware of all of the facts and provisions and that they watched a recording of the meeting that they missed. In our opinion, this would make for a more efficient process. It would expedite, expedite might not be the right word, but it would create a more efficient government. We, the general consensus that we're in favor of these, we had a few follow-up questions that we sent to Attorney Sipoleta, which we received answers on and we're really thankful for that quick response. So I think our concerns were clarified in committee, but we decided to hold these until our next council meeting just because we haven't heard back from members of the Board of Appeals directly yet. We want to make sure that we give them ample time to consider these and get back to us with any opinions or thoughts that they may have before we take a vote. This is the adjudicatory body of the town, so we want to make sure that before we change anything with their workflow or their composition that, you know, we have their buy-in because that is a tough committee to sit on, as we all know. So we wanted to just make sure that we're all on board here. But I do expect that at our next council meeting, we will have a recommendation to be voted on. So if any public hearings need to be posted to change the ordinance, I request that we do so.
Yep.
The second policy, or the second issue that we took up was the flag policy. This is something that the council's been talking about for years now. This was neither a rule nor an ordinance, but it was referred to our committee for the discussion. We presented with this policy from the town manager. The town manager had reviewed this with in-house counsel and compared it to what's out in the, in the space, in the space of government these days to make sure that this passes muster with the recent Supreme Court hearing and, you know, finalization of the City of Boston case. So that motion, well, that policy was moved forward unanimously and it is in your agenda packages for consideration this evening.
Thank you very much. Is there a question? Yes, Counsel Ayala. There had been a related on the Board of Appeals issues, there had been a related proposed ordinance change. I may have missed something about change of use restriction. Is that still in committee? What's the status of that?
That's not technically with rules and ordinance. Rules and ordinance, that's...
That's part of the ordinance review committee's recommendations and we're going through our in-house attorney to get, to get some more clarification on a couple of those items, including, you know, including the variant, the transient lodging and Airbnb and such. Can we try to schedule that soon? Yes, we hope to get that. So we think, you know, we think the Airbnb ordinance and transient lodging is gonna be a little extended, I think. It's gonna take some time to get it, to get it correct. And the, I think we should be able to hear back in a sooner period in terms of the use variance.
Okay. Yeah, and the Airbnb ordinance as well. It's incredibly important. We can fast-track that.
Yes.
It's sort of running rampant these days, so the faster we can go, the better.
Thank you. Any other questions? School Department met a week ago Monday. Major topic of discussion was the good news that the contractual situation with the ESPs has been settled. So we discussed that. Also on discussion again was the budget and the fact that the school committee will be voting on a recommended budget from them in a subsequent meeting in April. So they look for your input, parents and citizens alike, if you have any input on the school department budget or any thoughts, they would appreciate the comments. Town managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. On the topic of the flag policy, the flag poles are scheduled to be installed at the, before the end of April. So the three flag pole system we're referring to at the E.B. Newton Building will be installed. I was actually drove up Friday to take a look at the ferry boat, check a look at the new engines on last Friday up in Newburyport. Everything's on track. We need to, a little bit more wiring they were working on and then they have to schedule the sea trials, they call it, with Cummins Engines, the company that supplied the two new engines. So that'll be happening hopefully next week, but the mechanic that was working on it was on vacation last week. He's back tonight, so I'll be talking to him tomorrow to find out when that's gonna get scheduled. So, but we're happy about the work that was done and the ferry looked good, it's in the water, it's still floating, it's all good. But after that, with all the new engines, it's good and we're gonna get it down to the next step after that, once we certify the boat and everything with the new engines, then we have to get it down to either Boston or Gloucester to have the Coast Guard inspection done. We're in the every other year cycle, so this is the year we have to pull the boat out of the water and do a hull inspection. So we just gotta get that coordinated and scheduled. So we were hoping for the 15th of April. I don't know if we'll make that date, but hopefully before the end of the month, we can get it in the water. But that's the, we're pushing hard, so I'll go give updates as I get them, but we're still waiting on scheduling the, with the reps from the Cummins, so. It's been full steam ahead on the budget. That's most of my time is right now, putting, you know, anytime you introduce a new budget style and format, you know, there's a lot of work and making sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, so we're doing that, making sure all the numbers tick and talk back to the, you know, the main book document and all the expenses and revenues match up. So we're working on that diligently with the finance team. Also, I met with and working with the local veterans groups and our VSO, talking about Memorial Day. They've got an event planned for Flag Day. And Memorial Day will be slightly different. We'll start at the cemetery like we always do, but then there'll be a brief walk up back to Town Hall for a small ceremony after that. So keep that, more to follow on that, but that's what the plan is right now. We did get all the letters out in a timely fashion for the Revere Street Tips project for the easements, both the temporary easements and the permanent easements. We've been getting phone calls up in field and probably three or four a day, just people, clarification on what it is and, you know, how the process is gonna go. They've gotta hold those letters for 30 days and then we'll work on that. We'll be back for additional votes with the council as we move forward with what they call the takings. And then we wrap that up. And we're still on track though to put the project out to bid in June, which is crucial piece with Mass DOT, so we stay on target for start this work next spring, summer, so. Union negotiations going well. We still got the, you know, the Superior Union and the Patrolmen and Sergeants Union for the police, we're making good progress on that. And trees related, we actually, Steve Calli and I and our tree warden went down and reviewed all the placement of the trees that we're gonna do on Shirley Street by veterans that we received the donation at the Spring Forum Night from the, all the donated trees for the, you know, David Green, Ramona Cooper in their honor. So we're gonna plant those trees, there's 15 of them that are going in additional. 13 will be planted now and the other two, there's a construction project going on in the building on the corner there, so we're gonna hold off on that because there'll be some sidewalk work. The additional two will be planted once we locate those because we wanna not block new building entrances and things like that, so. But that'll all be done probably in the next month or so and then, you know, well before June. And then we'll have an event down there for the memorial bench that's going in at the corner there, so we'll do probably another event, I think the 26th falls on a Monday this year, so we'll look to do something there as well in honor of them, you know, that tragic event that happened in town. So that's all I have, so if anybody has any follow-up questions, I'm certainly...
Any questions? Counsel Munson.
Thank you, Anthony.
Yep.
I have a question about the trees. Maybe Mr. Calli could answer. What kind of trees are they?
Red maples.
Red maples. And that is the recommended tree for the town for all public sidewalks?
It's certainly an accepted street tree, but that was the one that was requested by the donation.
Great.
Yeah.
So that, so when you said the tree warden, you didn't mention the tree committee. Are they involved in the process as well?
They've been kept in the loop, but this was worked out with the, you know, the group that collected the money in the tree warden, yeah.
That's right.
Yep.
Yeah, I think Bob or Hannah suggested some locations and I believe, is that the same?
Yep, that was on a map that we looked at today and we marked them all out, yeah.
That's fantastic.
Within a few feet, yeah.
And the memorial bench, is that something that's through the memorial committee or the tree committee?
It's already been ordered. It was in front of the council before, a few months ago. Our VSO took care of that and moving forward.
Great work. Thanks, guys.
Counsel Flack.
Thank you, Town Manager.
Yes.
Back to the ferry. Is the MBTA involved with our ferry?
Not right now, no. I was still...
We're trying to.
Trying to, yep, but nothing yet, so we're still working on that.
And you hope that they'll be able to use the Charlie card on the ferry?
Right now, we'll still use ours current payment system, but again, that's all in process, so, yeah. We're gonna talk about it.
I understand that the ferry in East Boston are using the Charlie card.
That I'm not, that started up today, I think, or yesterday.
Yeah.
So I'm not positive about that, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, and the other thing, nice piece on that ferry too, is that what I didn't mention is, we're talking to Mass Port and we're very close to adding, I think we'll have it done this week, they just needed some additional information, but adding a stop at the airport at the Hyatt there. So that'll be an additional stop this year that wasn't available before. That should help some of our residents that work at the Logan and whatnots.
Anything else? Thank you very much. CDICI has not met since our last meeting.
Nope, they meet next week, yes.
All right, Old Business. Town council vote to transfer 18,000 from Town Attorney Legal Services lines to the Town Attorney Personnel line. Counsel Belcher.
Thank you. This passed unanimously and this is mostly administrative to add a new line for Town Attorney Personnel. We previously used the line that is Town Attorney Legal Services to pay KP Law and since we moved council in-house, we need to pay from a personnel line.
All right, this came out of committee with positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any discussion on this motion? Yes.
One thing, when that number was generated, it was a little mixed up on the weeks, so we'll probably be back in another month or so for just a few more dollars.
It was discussed in committee that the numbers didn't match up.
The number didn't jive, yeah. I think I forgot about the bi-weekly pay thing. It was, anyway, it's, it'll be adjusted, we'll be back with a little higher number, but I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If there's no, the ayes have it. Thank you. Town council review Board of Appeals composition, we're gonna hold that?
Yep, and just again, wait and give it another couple of weeks to, if we get any other feedback from the committee.
All right, thank you, Vice President. Flag policy, Counsel Ruggiero.
Sure. Yep, so like I mentioned earlier, the Rules and Ordinance Subcommittee came forward with the three to nothing positive recommendation to approve the flag policy as presented in your agenda packets. Excuse me, I'm just trying to find my draft. I got it, okay. So yeah, I will read it, it's not that long, but yeah, I think, I don't think I need a motion on this one. Motion that the town council adopt the following policy, policy use of flag poles on town property. Purpose: The purpose of this policy is to establish guidelines for the display of flags on property owned by the town of Winthrop. It is the policy of the town that flags should be displayed in conformance with federal and state policies as stated in the federal Our Flag publication of the United States Congress House Document Number 96-144, Chapters 2 and 2A of Massachusetts General Laws. Application: This policy applies to all flag poles that are in, from time to time, may be in use on real property belonging to the town of Winthrop and under control of the town council and the town manager. Such flag poles include without limitation those located at Town Hall, E.B. Newton School, French Square and Miller Field. This policy does not apply to flag poles on town property under the control of other public bodies, including those at the Winthrop Public Schools, which are governed by the school committee and the school superintendent. Paragraph 2: Expression of official sentiment, not a public forum. Town flag poles are not intended as a form for free expression by the public, rather the decisions of the town council or the town manager concerning which flags to fly and when and from which flag poles are intended as an expression of official town sentiment. Flags permitted by the town council or the town manager may be flown from any town flag poles, may or may not have some connection with groups using space on town property, but in each instance, the discretionary choice of the town council or the town manager to fly or not to fly a flag reflects the will of the town government and no group or individual shall have the right to dictate that choice. Paragraph 3: American flag. During inclement weather, the flag of the United States, except during inclement weather, excuse me, the flag of the United States shall be regularly flown during daylight hours from at least one flag pole at each town facility that has one or more flag poles. Shall not be flown at night except when illuminated. It shall be flown at half-staff whenever ordered by the President of the United States, the Governor of Massachusetts or the Town Manager of the town to honor the death of a public officer. No flag or banner may be displayed above the flag of the United States and no flag other than the POW MIA flag shall be displayed below the American flag on any town flag pole. The flag of the United States shall be flown in accordance with all applicable laws, including for USC Sections one through ten, Section one through ten. In the event of any inconsistency between such laws, in this policy, such laws shall take precedence. Paragraph four, POW MIA flag. In accordance with Massachusetts Acts nineteen eighty-six, Chapter three ninety-nine, Section one, the POW MIA flag shall be regularly flown during daylight hours from a flag pole on the grounds of at least one town facility. Paragraph five, other flags. The town flag poles are not intended to serve as a form for free expression by the public. The following flags may be displayed on the community flag pole at the E.B. Newton School by the town as an expression of the town's official sentiments. Subsection A, flags displayed in conjunction with official events or ceremonies. By resolution of the Town Manager or proclamation of the Town Council, other flags may be displayed at the community flag pole at the E.B. Newton School. B, flags of local or professional sports teams. The Town Council may order the display of a professional or local sports team's flag to commemorate a significant achievement involving the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or the town of Winthrop. C, flags displayed by proclamation. By proclamation of the Town Council, other flags may be displayed, but not be displayed in place of the flag of the United States of America. No flag shall be displayed for more than fourteen days on the community flag pole at the E.B. Newton School, with the exception of the flag of the town of Winthrop. Paragraph six, prior policies rescinded, all previous policies regarding town flags and flag poles are hereby rescinded. This policy shall take effect upon adoption by the Town Council.
And that did come out of committee with unanimous positive recommendation.
Correct, yes.
It does not require a second. We'll have discussion on this, if there is any. Counsel DeMarco.
So when, when we originally, when I saw your original version of the flag policy, I, I saw there were specific events tied to that. That's not in the motion we got now.
Nope.
Okay, so, so, yeah, because I, I, there were other events I wanted to add to that, but I don't have to do that at this time, correct?
Nope.
Okay.
Counsel Aiello.
Just sort of a little bit of a wording thing and then a clarification somewhat related to Counsel DeMarco's. In five A and C, we use the word by proclamation, and in B, we say that the Town Council may order. But in reality, it's, every one of them is sort of a proclamation, right? They're all consistent.
Yeah. That was the intent, I think that's the intent, yeah.
I think that's, just for clarification, I think that's the intent, so I'm satisfied with that. Is it clear, again, related to what Counsel DeMarco said? What is the process for the council to hear a proclamation and to be presented and then voted on it? How, is there something in the rulebook that sort of describes that process? Or someone just makes a motion at a meeting?
Yeah, makes a proclamation.
Is it in the agenda for the following meeting, something?
Yeah.
Okay, so if somebody wants to, if somebody in the community wants to sort of fly a flag, let's say for the Bruins or somebody, they can contact the council. We can then put it on the council agenda for the following meetings. Is that the way it would work?
I believe so, yeah. I think that's.
Yes, it's exactly the way it would work. And to go back, just another point that Counsel Aiello made on five B, how it says, you know, the Town Council made, and I think this goes back to a prior public comment, I guess, on Town Council versus Town Manager. And in this situation, and this would be specific, like, say, it's a Bruins game to win the Stanley Cup, and we haven't met, or for whatever reason, the Town Manager has the authority through this to raise that flag without us. So that's, it's, you know, we're not trying to create two chiefs here. We're trying to give the opportunity to Town Manager to do something if we had not had the opportunity to meet in that specific time. But the vast majority of this should be coming from the council. Counsel DeMarco. Uh, thank you, Counsel President. Yeah, I just think we need to be consistent. I mean, we're talking about fourteen days for certain events, like, like, I was looking at the calendar and just saying, like, okay, we can do fourteen days for this, we can do fourteen days for this. We can't be doing fourteen days for one event and then five for another. We need to keep it all consistent, so that way, you know, there's, there's no misjudgment. You know what I mean? It needs to be consistent. And because it's from the cultural center, and when I think of culture, that can be anything. That can be, you know, it could be a religion, it could be, it could be anything, okay? So, I mean, it's almost like the rules of separation between church and state don't apply in front of the cultural center, because it's a cultural center. So I just want us to keep that in mind.
Vice President O'Gill.
I just wanna say, this has been a long time coming, and after the City of Boston case had concluded, KP, at the time, had emailed us saying that the one thing you shouldn't do is nothing. They said you need a flag policy and you should get on it soon. And I think it took us a little bit longer to get there, maybe, than it should have, but we're here. You know, I think that, yes, the precedent will be set as we kinda go forward with this. And so, you know, precedent isn't necessarily a legal or an illegal thing, it's just precedent. So I think everybody's gonna have to just kinda, you know, stick to their own beliefs or whatever have you as we go forward with this. But, you know, I, I think that we have really good policy in front of us that takes elements from other flag policies across the country that have passed muster. So I think that's definitely a positive thing here as well.
Counsel Munson.
Thank you, President. I was hoping for a little more clarification, just in the event that someone wanted to propose something. They could call, a citizen could call or email their counselor, their precinct counselor, or counselor at large, or just directly to, an email to the Town Council. Can you just clarify on that? And I have two other subsequent questions.
Yeah, there's a Town Council email or, you know, reach out individually.
And so would they advocate for it or just suggest it? And then that counselor would just go ahead, therefore, bring it to the attention of the whole council?
Bring it to the attention, then it would have to, you know, get the necessary votes and everything else. I mean, not every council may agree, right, so?
And so, to that effect, can you just clarify why it's not a freedom of speech issue?
That's the shirtliff case, cannot be. That was, this is the guidance that you got from the shirtliff case. That's where Boston got in trouble. You know, it's not about the, what the public wants to fly, it's about the sentiment of the town, and it's a town government decision, not a free speech issue.
So not every flag will be flown just because it's, it's not a free speech issue?
Correct, somebody could come forward and the council doesn't get the votes and the flag doesn't get flown.
So it basically boils down to the sentiment of the actual council was that vote.
Right, yep. And they could not even, just 'cause it comes up in public comment or whatever, it doesn't necessarily, the council doesn't have to take it up. It's the, it's the will of, it's the will of the town government, you know, it's the sentiment of the town that way, as the elected body.
And I do think that there is some room for divisiveness on this, and it creates some issues. If one flag, let's say we celebrate, let's say, you know, this population is predominantly, you know, of certain heritage. If we raise the flags to celebrate their heritage, then all of a sudden, other countries may... So it does start to, like, the second we start getting some requests, it will actually invoke more conversation and discussion, because, like we said before, it creates a precedent as soon as one is accepted or denied. So it will be challenging at times to, to kind of see this through, but for the most part, we're following the federally recognized events that will not be any surprise to anyone.
Right, and most, if you look up the policy around flags, most of them are tied to the American flag, right? Most of the federal holidays, other than Juneteenth, I think that's the only one that has its own flag, but everybody else is tied to the, how you fly the American flag, whether it's at, like, Memorial Day. You know, half-mast and it gets raised, you know, those kind of things. So, yeah, for the most part, those are all laid out and.
In terms of town morale and supporting our local schools and local teams, I think it would be a no-brainer to have, let's say, you know, the Viking flag going as soon as we went, you know, as we're approaching playoffs, or, you know, something like that, but... The other bigger stuff, you know, do you have any flags already that you're, have been proposed or suggested? Or is this gonna see as you see basis?
As we go, I mean, we all, you know.
Great, thank you.
Counsel DeMarco.
And so, Counsel Munson, I'm actually glad you went on this line of questioning, because I was asking about the original holidays that I had saw in, in the original policy. And I was gonna say, like, you know what? Well, then, you know, we, if, if we're gonna do Italian Heritage Month and raise the Italian flag, then we definitely have to raise the Irish flag for St. Patrick's Day and, and those two weeks. I was thinking, we have a strong Jewish community in this town. We should raise the Israeli flag for Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, you know? And, and, you know, this would probably be the most controversial one, but raise the Christian flag for Christmas. You know what I mean? And, and I'm ignorant on some of the other holidays, but I'm open, like, I would never vote against any other holidays. Like, if there's a flag for Ramadan, raise it, you know what I mean? I'm all for it. Let's celebrate all cultures. When I was a kid, you know, we had a strong Jewish community, you know? We actually had Yom Kippur off. We, we actually didn't go to school on that day. And, you know, it's gotten to the point in society where, like, it's like, let's ignore all cultures, okay? Let's just ignore them. And it makes us ignorant, it makes us ignorant. I liked it when everybody celebrated everybody's culture, everybody learned about everybody, you know? I think that's the good stuff. I, I, I think learning about different cultures is so important, and now we ignore cultures. So I'm glad you brought that up, because I think there's definitely a lot of flags we can raise and teach our children about, you know?
Any other discussion? Vice President O'Gill.
One quick point that we brought up in Subcommittee that I didn't share during our, during my committee report. You know, we recognize that, you know, not every event or holiday or whatever have you has a flag. And so I think one challenge to us as a council and the Town Manager as the Town Manager and all of our volunteer committees as volunteer committees is finding ways to celebrate our, you know, our diversity here in town, for lack of a better term, through programming and, and events and things of that such. But, you know, I think that, you know, this is, this is definitely one step in that direction, but this isn't like a solve-all. In a lot of ways, it's a cop-out, right? You know, if we're just raising a flag with no sort of educational or, or programming surrounding it. So I, that's just my opinion, but we referenced that in the Subcommittee as well, so I wanted to make sure I brought it up here tonight.
Great, any other discussion? If not, there's a motion, it came out of committee with positive recommendation, does not require a second?
Oh, doesn't.
Okay. I will ask for a roll call vote for this.
Counsel Honan.
Yes.
Counsel Piscillo.
Counsel Munson.
Yes.
Counsel Belcher.
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco.
Yes.
Counsel Flackhart.
Yes.
Counsel Aiello.
Yes.
Vice President O'Gill.
Yes.
President Lotteri.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to solid waste ordinance. Let's stick with Vice President O'Gill.
Sure, so the solid waste ordinance has been with the council for a few meetings now. This is a five-pager.
Yeah, this one you do not have to.
Yeah.
No, read it, read it, read it. Counsel Flackhart to waive the reading. Second by Counsel Aiello. All those in favor of wa-waving the reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Summarize, um, just, so to summarize, just as a reminder, this council voted to, put this in an enterprise fund a year and a half ago. We voted to set a fee on this a year ago, just to, oh, maybe my timeline's off. What this does is that it codifies our solid waste and recycling curbside collection program into our book of ordinances. It gives deference to the Town Manager to set the fee. But he already has the ability to do that through those prior motions, but it more so formalizes that. It also gives deference to the Town Manager to, um, charge for overflow bags, right? I think this is the big change here, is that we're getting closer to an equitable system where you're gonna pay for the amount of trash that you produce. That is one of the changes here that is coming out of this. This also allows the Town Manager to privately negotiate with some of the rooming houses in town, the board, and the housing authorities. So that, that's what we're voting on tonight. We're not voting about a trash fee, we're not voting about an enterprise fund. The, we're voting on what's in front of us, which is, like I said, the, the big change here is the, the overflow bag policy, which will be implemented, so.
So most people in town, this ordinance will not affect in any way, shape, or form. What it does, and again, just to clarify a little bit, when the previous Town Manager signed a trash contract, the contract stated that each household would be able to throw out one bag of trash, one barrel of trash that was provided by the town. We have, over the past two years, been very lenient with that and given people the ability to try to, you know... The goal of this, I think, has always been and will be to reduce the amount of solid waste we throw out as a town. So we, we've enabled people over the past couple of years to throw out, to, to basically throw out in accordance with what you're allowed to throw out, throw out what they wish. And so if it was two barrels, it was two barrels. If it was three barrels, we were still picking it up. Now, since we are halfway through the contract, we are trying to enforce the contract, which, again, will help us to throw away less trash. So, you know, and there are regulations set by the Board of Health, and we have the Chairman of the Board of Health with us, so if there's any questions, please feel free to speak up, Bill. But, you know, part of the guidelines with the Board of Health is there are certain times when you get put out barrels. Barrels are to be of a certain thing, and the covers of these barrels are supposed to be able to close flatly, correct? Thank you, and that will continue under this policy. And, and as the Vice President said, and thank Rules and Ordinance for all their work on this, and the Town Manager as well, and the Board of Health as well also. But this enables us to get to, again, a more equitable system. And again, I, I strongly believe that this will not affect, this specific ordinance will affect a few amount of people in this town. Along with this ordinance, there will be some sort of abatement process available, which we can talk more about also, which will give people the opportunity, again, to throw away less trash and maybe get a smaller barrel or such. There will be certain abatements available. But if there are questions, and I'm sure there will be, questions on this, this, again, is coming out of committee, has a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Before I go to the council, I will ask the Chairman of the Board of Health.
Thanks, Counsel President. I just wanna say that I had a pleasure working with both the Town Manager and the Ordinance Committee to basically try to make sure that we're on the same page. And after you pass the ordinance, we will look at our regulation again, just to make sure that they conform, so that there's no confusion.
Thank you. Now go to the council for questions.
What comment?
What comments? Counsel Munson.
I just wanna say thanks. You guys put some solid work into it, and it's a nice piece of legislation, and I think that it's making our town more efficient. And I think that where the world is going, there's nowhere to put the trash, we need to reduce it. I think it's great, and we're gonna reduce our costs as a result, so thank you for your hard work.
Counsel DeMarco.
So, this is kinda funny. I, when I was a kid, I got paid five dollars by my grandmother and my parents to take out the rubbish. That was my job, and it was usually like six or seven of those green trash bags that I had to just plop out front. And then we had, you know, then we had two and a half overrides left and right in the late nineties, trying to, to do things. And one of them was actually, like, if you don't pass this two and a half override, there'll be no high school sports ever again at Winthrop. And the town actually said, no, we don't believe you, and voted no. And of course, that's how the Viking Pride Foundation was formed. Then they itemized the two and a half override to include the trash fee. My understanding is that we still pay taxes towards our trash right now, correct?
Yes, right now.
Right now you do.
Yeah, so if we're paying taxes towards our trash.
And you will continue to after this, this is not fully.
Correct, and you have a family of five in one house, and you have a family of two in another house. They're essentially paying for the same barrel and the same recycling bin, correct? Based on that, I can't vote positively for this.
Counsel Flackhart.
Just to build on what you've said, I live in a hundred and sixth unit building. I pay taxes too, to all of this. I have private trash collection, as does every other building in this town that has more than three units. So we're all paying the taxes, but there for lots of things.
Vice President O'Gill.
I just wanna reiterate, we're not voting on a trash fee tonight. You already voted on that, a year and a half ago. I don't remember the vote count, but we already voted on that. It's already in an enterprise. I don't remember the vote count, but we already voted on that. It's already in an enterprise fund. We already voted on the trash fee. So, that's not what the vote is about tonight. So, I don't want to weaponize this and make this a political lightning rod, like that's not what this is. That vote already happened. So, this is completely separate and this is just adding a layer to it that will make it more equitable so that you are now going to have to pay more for the amount of trash that you produce. And I think that's, that's the path that maybe we want to get on.
This is basically enforcing the contract that was signed two years ago with a caveat to give people the opportunity to continue to throw away more than was allotted by the contract.
If we vote this down tonight, everyone's still going to get a trash fee next year. It's not like we're saving the trash fee for this. That already, that vote already happened.
Counsel Belcher.
I was just going to reiterate what the Vice President said and what the President mentioned. This isn't a vote for the fee, this just codifies what we're already, what we already have in practice. And the feedback I've gotten often from constituents is that they don't think it's equitable that their neighbors throw out twice as much trash as they do and they're paying the same fee. So, that eradicates that issue.
This policy takes care of that.
And hopefully with the abatement policy, it will give people maybe, I'm not distinguishing, but maybe seniors that throw away less trash the opportunity to get a smaller sized barrel. You know, the goal is to throw away less. And, and I will say, and I do, I do want to say, and I've asked the town manager and the DPW Director who is here with us to give me a little flow chart, which I'm going to expand a little bit and share with the council over the next week or so, which just gives us a recap of the tonnage that we use on a monthly basis and the prices that we're paying. And it's really incredible. And it's incredible to look at the fluctuation in prices, for example, of recycling that, you know, a year and a half ago was at $11.67 a ton and today is $115.33 a ton. And these are very variable. But I do want to say that during these past two and a half years of enacting this, this was a major change for the town. This is something brand new. This was groundbreaking. And I want to thank Steve Calla and his crew in the DPW and now the Trash Enterprise Fund for really making this a relatively seamless transaction. It's, this was a major deal and I want to thank you. You know, there were all sorts of concerns at the beginning as to what this was going to do and how it was going to affect the appearance of the town and this, that and the other thing. But, you know, there's been bumps, just like we said earlier, nobody and nothing is infallible, but the bumps have been minor and again, I think a lot of it is to the guidance of Steve, so I thank you for that. And I thank you for this transparency in terms of the tonnage that is being thrown out. And you could see a decrease in tonnage too, and I think that's just the learning process. Again, don't want to belabor. Any further discussion on the change in the ordinance? Seeing that, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Counsel Honan.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Counsel Piscillo. Counsel Munson. Counsel Belcher.
Yes.
Counsel Flockhart.
Yes.
Counsel Ayala.
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco.
No.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Yes.
President Luteri.
Yes.
Thank you.
The committee handbook was somehow put on the agenda, but we did handle this at the last meeting.
Counsel Belcher wants to read.
The next two items are going to keep a place on the agenda and that is the Winter Beach access points and the MBTA review as to, as to the route in Winthrop and how it might be able to be changed slightly to be safer for our community. And I did talk with Representative Turco today, who is now in the process of helping us out with both of these in terms of giving us the ability to have representation here in very short order. We were hoping to have somebody at this meeting and schedules seem to be tied up when we call. So, hopefully maybe you go a little higher and maybe the schedules free up a little bit. So, we hope to have representation here, especially on the beach project, on the beach access. I just don't want to wait until July 4th to say we still don't have access to some points in the beach. So, and we had been promised this at the end of last summer that this issue would be addressed. So, we will keep on that. Yes, Counsel Ayala.
Just a point and my information may not be accurate, but I ran into a former member of the Conservation Commission who said that when all of that sand and rocks were brought into the beach, that DCR committed in an agreement with the town, Winthrop, for 10 years of maintenance is baked into that agreement and that DCR has not followed through. So, I don't know if we can dig up that agreement between us and DCR that allowed the, all that work to do there, but that, the person said that DCR is in clear violation of their contractual obligation to maintain that beach, so.
Counsel Ayala, I can tell you, I saw her, I saw them doing work on Winter Beach this week. So, I don't know what.
If it's consistent with the contract.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Thank you. Town council evaluation forms, employees and vendors, this is the Committee on, former Committee on Committees. Counsel Belcher, this is still in committee, correct?
We, we met on the 27th and fine tuned the goals that are going to be included on the evaluations and they are ready to come out to the council for feedback. I'll get those out by the end of day tomorrow. We're asking for council feedback by the 14th. That'll give the committee a couple of weeks to put it all together and then meet with the town manager and town clerk for the evaluations.
Thank you. New business, I have one appointment I'd like to make that the town council accepted the appointment made by Town Council President Luteri to appoint Debbie Chavez to the Scholarship Committee for a term to expire for the remainder of a term vacated. The term would expire on June 30th, 2024. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Counsel Belcher, second by Counsel DeMarco. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The Ayes have it. Congratulations Debbie Chavez on the scholarship committee. And I've already contacted Mary Wasborn, who does an incredible job with that committee and she is well aware of this and has contact information for Debbie, so Debbie can hit the ground running.
My next door neighbor, you know I'm going to hear a lot of.
Public comment number two. Anybody on Zoom?
No.
Anyone in the audience? Public relations. Does this, does the rabies clinic just stay on the agenda? Because I feel like I've talked way too often.
Forgetting it's only Monday.
29, 23, 10 a.m. to 12 noon, the annual rabies clinic at the old middle school auditorium. And the senior workoff program applications are available at the senior center until April 7th, so shortly. Counsel Honan?
Yeah, I'd just like to remind everybody not to throw their textiles in the trash. There are textile bins. There's one at DPW. There's one at the basketball courts near the pillar house. Is there a third one or the?
The landing.
Public landing. So, please, if you have any textiles, don't throw them in the trash. Bring them to the dumpsters. Thanks.
Also, two new book drop offs.
Oh, all right.
One at the town hall and the other one down at that high school on Payson Street.
All right, book drop offs, so don't throw your books in the trash.
Recycle books. There's one right around the corner here, up by the door and then what's the other one?
At Payson Street.
Payson Street near the high school.
There's also a bin behind the FKO.
Get recycled.
That's just for like, for the donation as opposed to throw away.
Throw them in the trash.
Counsel Munson.
In case you guys missed the last blood drive and you wanted to donate, you can save some lives by donating your blood on April 11th at the Odd Fellows Hall at 196 Winthrop Street. You can look it up on redcross.org.
Counsel Belcher.
Just a reminder that you can donate to the Rona Mail Town Scholarship and anytime by sending a check to the tax collector's office payable to the town of Winthrop indicating Rona Mail Town Scholarship on the memo line.
Counsel DeMarco.
Flag football in Winthrop starts up on April 15th. So, fun times at Miller Field are here again. I don't have to worry about losing the counselor's cup because you're out as a coach.
That's right.
So, but no, yeah, but get down and watch some, some fun. It's really fun. It's really a fun, family oriented event, so get down.
And when is that?
Starts April 15th.
Thank you. Counsel Ayala.
April 29th and 30th, the Winthrop House Council is holding their annual spring arts event at the EB Newton School.
Counsel Flockhart. Vice President Ruggiero.
I was going to wait until next week, but everybody else had something, so I guess I'll pitch this two weeks in a row. Or two meetings in a row. On Sunday, May 7th, at Deer Island, Winarc will have its annual Winarc Run, Walk and Roll around the island to support individuals and families in our communities with physical and developmental disabilities. This is a great annual event. We have some great sponsors this year as we always do. But if anyone is around or would like to attend, you can buy a ticket online. The link is consistently posted on the Winarc Facebook page, but I will get a more appropriate link to the clerk for next week's agenda. But great time next, Sunday, May 7th, 10 a.m., Deer Island.
Thank you. No other business before the council. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
One more quick thing. I'd like to, I'm sorry, Counsel President. I just would like to wish everybody a blessed Passover and a great Easter, so.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to adjourn by Counsel Belcher, second by Counsel Ayala. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The Ayes have it. Thank you.